Good evening and welcome to the June 27, 2022 work session of the mayor and city council. Tonight, we have one discussion topic, which is the Quinns Orchard Boulevard reconstruction and shared use path update. But before we get into that, I wanted to announce that next week, I just wanted to make, I just wanted to reiterate that next week's meeting is not on the fourth Monday as they use, as it usually is. It's on Tuesday, July 5th, 7:30 PM. It is our intention to have this meeting hybrid in person if you want to participate in person or on Zoom. And hopefully we will be back in person, but tonight we're exclusively on Zoom. So with that, we will begin our discussion and tech team, if you could bring up, is Brian leading this conversation or is it Mark Kyle?
Mr. Mayor, it's myself, Mark.
Okay, Mark, Mark, take it away.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Tonight, we'd like to give you an update for the Quinns Orchard Boulevard project. We've, we've went over some hurdles we've got to this point. We're glad to be able to present this to you this evening. And we have tonight Seth Darlington with our consulting team. And would like to just kind of start the discussion and presentation with a brief history. It's reiterated in the slides. But just a quick overview, the project originally started in 2015, June, and it was primarily based on the reconstruction efforts due to some of the large trees along the corridor impacting some of the city's infrastructure. We proceeded to, there was a meeting at the time with, you know, with the city council to in person to review the situation. And it was determined to move forward with, to see how we could deal with the impacts from those trees. And it was determined to, the idea was not to impact any of the adjacent parking along the corridor. And we were trying to determine how we can make the infrastructure and pavement back to a, a level that we could maintain it again. In June 2017, the design commenced for a cycle track along Quinns Orchard Boulevard. It was determined later with that design being conceptually at the May during the May 2018 time period, a 30% design was created. Unfortunately, during with that portion, the cycle track did impact a lot of parking in the corridor. So it was not, it was determined not to proceed with that particular design. The, later, a concept was created in July 2019 for a concept implementing a shared use path, which enables us to keep the existing parking along the corridor while maintaining the existing four foot greenway or utility strip on the eastern side of, of Quinns Orchard Boulevard. In December 2020, the contract, the current contract with Wallace Montgomery was awarded for the design of a shared use path on Quinns Orchard Boulevard. And subsequently, we presented last year in July 2021 for the 30% design concept, which was presented to the public, which, and, and the mayor and city council. We've taken that, that, that feedback and implemented into the 60% design that we have for you today. With that in mind, I'd like to turn it over to our consultant Seth Darlington and would like to have him provide progressive updates for this project. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Would you mind, tech team, would you mind bringing up the PowerPoint? All right, I think we can move on to the next slide. Mark just introduced himself. My name is Seth Darlington. I'm with Wallace Montgomery. I'm a civil engineer, leading as the consultant design team. We have a pretty wide array of engineers working on this project and landscape architects. So it's a good multi-discipline team that we're working with. Next slide, please. Just an overview of the, of the design as Mark has outlined already. This is a shared use path on, along Quinns Orchard Boulevard on the west side of Quinns Orchard Boulevard from First Field Road in the south to First Field in the north. And then a little spur along Rabbit Road to the Robertson Youth Center. It's a 10-foot wide asphalt shared use path. Shared use means available for cyclists, strollers, runners, walkers, anyone who wants to use the path. It's a, it's a low speed informal path that's available to everyone. In order to do this, we're shifting the curb line on Quinns Orchard Boulevard, making the roadway a little bit more narrow. So we're shifting the, the curb line on the west side towards the east, tightening up the lanes, tighten up the parking, but we're not losing any parking lanes or we're not losing any travel lanes on the roadway. It's a pretty wide roadway, so narrowing it helps to reduce the speeds without reducing any sort of capacity. So along with the shared use path, we're doing quite extensive pavement repairs and fully resurfacing Quinns Orchard Boulevard. As you all know, might know that the, there is quite a bit of damage to the asphalt on Quinns Orchard Boulevard from age, as well as from the street trees that are, have overgrown their area and roots have been impacting the asphalt, damaging it even farther. Stormwater management is a requirement of a project like this. So this is, and it's a big part of this project too. So we're installing modern stormwater management facilities all along Quinns Orchard Boulevard. And we'll talk a little bit more about that later. Will be installing new LED lighting, both for the street to replace the existing lighting system, which is an old, old school metal highlight. We're replacing it with LEDs and we're also installing new LED lighting for the pedestrian pathway along the shared use path. And also a very extensive landscaping plan for the project. Next slide, please. Mark talked a little bit about the project history. The last time I spoke with a lot of you was about a year ago at 30% design level. We took your direction and iterated over the past year. And I think we came up with what, what, what was your direction and also what it's in the best interest of the city. We're now at the 60% level, which really means that the design should be fairly well set. No major changes to the design beyond this, though the, are the last 40% is really crossing the Ts and dotting the Is, making sure that it's clear and constructible. And, you know, engineering to, to make sure that, that the city gets what they want in the end. Next slide, please. This is an overview. I know it's, it's a big project to see at this level. We'll, we'll have a couple of details in the next couple of slides. But the, the, the design plan shows full asphalt reconstruction of the roadway, the shared use path along the, what's, this is flipped, so it's north is to the, to the, the right here. So the shared use path is along the west side of the roadway. We have a couple of additions and changes to how this was designed. And let's, let's go to the next slide and we can talk about those. So one of the things that we had a pretty good discussion about at the last time that we presented this to Mayor and Council was the street trees. We have a number of street trees along the east side of Quinns Orchard Boulevard that are, have, have over matured their space in between the roadway and the sidewalk. There's really only a four foot section, a planting section in between the roadway and the sidewalk. And these trees have, many of them have, have taken over that entire width. And they're overturning, overgrowing the, the curb line and they're pushing up the sidewalk and areas. So the city had us look at this situation in a few different ways. We looked at it for, as a, as a geotechnical engineer about what the impact was from these trees on the roadway and the, the civil design, the, the, the sidewalk, the curb line and and, and they, the, the civil engineer assessment was that there's extensive damage from the trees on the roadway system itself. So I spoke about this earlier, the asphalt, the subbase of the roadway has been damaged by the roots. And this is a, not a good situation for both the roadway and the trees. The trees are suffering because they're in the roadbed and the road is suffering because the root system is taking over the roadbed. So we also looked at it from an arborist standpoint. They found that the necessary work of repairing the road would further stress the trees and would likely lead to their death, their demise in, in the soon term, the near term. So if we did any work within the roadway, we're going to be damaging an extensive portion of the root system. And that was not a good situation for the trees. So, you know, we discussed these things at the last council session that we were at and our direction was sadly to remove and replace the trees, but look for opportunities to, to replace them, maybe investigate looking, saving a few of the trees. And we've done both of those things. So next slide, please. So we've got a landscaping plan, a pretty extensive landscaping plan that, that aims to create a sort of a uniform look throughout the, the roadway, throughout the, the corridor with new street trees, replacing these 19 street trees, mature street trees on the east side, but as well as others that are impacted by the project. We've got about 35 trees that need to be removed because of the project. And we're proposing about 75 tree replacements. So that, along with shrubbery, undergrowth, you know, we, we really see that landscaping is an important part of this project to create the space that residents want and, and need and to fit in with the character of Athensburg. Along with the extensive landscaping plan, we looked for key locations to save some of these mature trees on the east side of Quinns Orchard Boulevard. Two locations we have shown right here, one is at the intersection of Rabbit Road. And then the other is across from Brown Station, Brown Station Elementary. We're proposing to bump out the curb, to narrow the roadway even farther, lose some parking, yes, but provide a wider area for those, the, the existing street trees, less damage, minimize the damage to the, to the roadway, minimize the damage from reconstructing the roadway and, and create a sort of a feature to save these three trees. It's sort of light in the PowerPoint, but hopefully you can, you can see what's, what's happening. The lower paint there, we've got the sidewalk, which would jot out into the roadway along, follow along the curb line there and allow for an easier crossing, pedestrian crossing to Brown Station, which is great too. And then continue north along the curb, the new curb line and, and then move around the street tree there. In that case, the street tree is, not only it's an overtopping the curb line, but it's also heaving up the sidewalk. So if we had to replace the sidewalk behind the tree where it is, then we'd have to cut into the roots. But in this case, we don't have any impact on the roots. It's just replacing it over the top of what it is right now. And then at Rabbit Road, we've got a nice, longer curve extension. It'll be mostly turf or low, low shrubbery grasses. And then, and we don't have the problem where the trees are uplifting the sidewalk so we can leave the sidewalk in place behind them. And then allow for a shorter crossing for pedestrians, have it, which is another great improvement as well. And then the other big discussion that we had with the council in the city after the meeting was stormwater management. And we can go to the next slide. So the stormwater management at 30% level, we had quite a bit of environmental impacts. Now just step back, stormwater management is required. We need to do these facilities to follow code. And it's, it's, it's treating water that comes off of the roadway, slowing it down before it gets into the streams and we're removing contaminants as much as possible. So there are very specific technical requirements that we need to hit. And this is one of the areas that we've done a ton of work on over the past year or so. So our goal was to minimize the tree and environmental impacts. So tree impacts, if there's, if we're placing a stormwater management facility where there's existing trees, we need to remove them. So that's, that's the tree impact, but also if we're grading near or around them, it impacts the root zones of the trees. So that's a potential impact to the tree as well. And the other thing that we had in this area is a stream valley buffer. So along the, the stream near the park, we have a buffer around that stream that we need to stay out of in order to, to follow the city's code. All of the work that we've designed now is outside of the stream valley buffer. And why don't we go to the next slide? We'll show you the four stormwater facilities on the south end of the project. We do have a few others that are scattered around the project, but these are the, the main areas. And we've really focused the, the stormwater in this area mainly because it's in city property. So it's in city parks. It's, it's in the park property that is less used. So there are other park properties along Quinns Orchard that are, that are very much, they're heavily used all the time. So we didn't want to impact that area as much. And we wanted to, with these, we have, we've, we've stayed outside of the stream valley buffer. So we've done things like, instead of having the pipe outfall, the, the water coming out from these facilities, instead of having it coming into the stream at its banks, we're, instead, we're taking it on a diamond, diamond drive. And we're bringing it down the roadway, a disturbed area, which is not in the stream valley buffer, and then bring it into the, the culvert that's, that crosses Diamond Drive. We do have environmental impacts from this, however, it is within the 100-year floodplain. There is that line there, you can see it's sort of diagonally crossing from the right to the left. In fact, Quinns Orchard Boulevard is, is also within the 100-year floodplain. This is a permitting issue only, and it's, it's an issue that we have begun the discussions with MDE, the state Maryland Department of Environmental, Environment, to get that permitted. It's, it's, it should be not a non-issue, but it is a permit process. I should say, the project will not negatively impact the floodplain. So as to say, it doesn't raise the floodplain level at all. So just to be clear on that, or else MDE would not permit it anyway. So the other things that we're doing here is we're, we're reducing as much as possible a tree impacts from the stormwater management.
Seth, if I could add a few things into this. During our evaluation of the stormwater management facilities, we did evaluate some other practices that go beyond the bio-retentions that's presented today. We tried porous pavement, which unfortunately was not successful. We, we wanted to try to use that as, if possible, to achieve our ESD requirements. Unfortunately, the infiltration rates and, and some of the areas were in fill, fill, which is not a great thing for those practices. So we, we've tried some other alternatives, some proprietary package systems, different ways to see if we could do it. Ultimately, the bio-retentions that were presented were the best option, best bang for the city's dollar for treatment and meeting our goals for the engineering ESD requirements as related, required for the disturbance. So just wanted to add, add to that. Thanks, Seth.
Yeah, thanks, Mark, for that. It, it was an iterative process to land at where we are now. So we think it's the best option in the, in the city's interest as well. So I guess moving on the next slide, we talk about the budget where we're at now. The construction costs, as we have estimated right now, is 3.7 million. We do have three different buckets of funding for this project. So we've broken it out in, in that, in that as it is. Construction costs are, continue to be a challenge to estimate. I'm sure you, you all know inflation is, is a kicker and it's, it's sometimes unpredictable in construction costs. We've done our best to, to estimate where we are right now with this. And then the next slide, we talk about our schedule. We're here in summer of 2022. We expect to wrap up final design in the coming months. Do pre-construction work beyond that, that would be utility relocations and property acquisitions. And then construction would start next summer and we expect it to take about a year to do. And with that, I believe that's all we have. The next slide, just to make sure, yep, that's it. So we can throw it back to Mark.
Thank you, Seth, for, for the presentation. We wanted to turn this over for any questions that anyone may have. We would be more than happy to answer those questions. And we, we went through an extensive design process for this, trying to make sure that we were sensitive to our trees in the corridor as much as we possibly could. That made, you know, engineering and a community and, and financial sense for us. So that, that was part of the additional time period for, why we're coming back to you a year later, unfortunately. But that, that is part of the, the design process. So we'll turn it over to anybody that may have questions. So we're here to answer.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Seth. Appreciate the presentation. Council members, I'll open it up to you guys. Raise your hand if you'd like to speak. I'll call on you. I'm kind of expecting Brian, I'm kind of expecting Ryan's got a question.
I mean, the mayor knows that I was asking over email recently in preparation for tonight's session, just to have staff kind of explain why, when you look at the, the timeline of events, we were, you know, talking about starting to plan this project back in 2015 and now it's seven years later and we're at 60% design, hoping to have it constructed, I guess, within the next year. Certainly lots of intervening things have happened in those seven years, not the least of which has been the COVID pandemic. But I think in your, in your presentation, you kind of touched upon it a little bit as to sort of why we had, you know, certain delays. I don't know if staff wants to elaborate on that anymore or not, but, you know, I mean, I think we're all aware of it. We understand that there were various challenges with this and other projects in the last several years. But I am just glad to see us moving forward apace now with this and look forward to the final product relatively soon. But if staff does want to comment on, on the timeline and the things that impacted it, you know, that would be fine. And if, if you feel like that's already been captured by your previous comments, that's fine with me too. Thank you, Mayor.
Um, I'd like to reiterate, you know, that the process has been lengthy, unfortunately. But we, we've, we've been able to try to deliver at this point what, what direction we've received from the, the multiple councils through, through the years. So we've tried to take, take that into consideration. But I think we are moving forward in a, in a way that brings the community, you know, and a, and a part that we've taken their consideration into this. We, we believe that, you know, this is going to be a great asset for the community and, and everybody that's going to use it throughout that. So we, we, we really look forward to having this design completed as much as, you know, I hate to say it. I'm, I'm really kind of pushing our design team to go as fast as possible, but yet keep engineering practice for the forefront. So, and I, I do think our design team has really supported the city for this project. So I would, we, we've really asked them, I hate to say it, a million questions and tried to make sure that we kept them on their toes to make sure that they're, they're working for us. So they have done a really good job at this point and we'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go to Rob Wu.
Thanks, Mayor, and thank you, Mark and Seth, for the presentation and the update. Just a few questions is, you know, this, this process has been going on for quite some time. And in the interim of our initial look at this and where we are today, what was the prospective NIST path is actually the completed NIST path. And so I was wondering, I know when we had the, the, the original design with the bike lane going, there was connectivity proposed across to, to the NIST path on Quinns Orchard Road. Road and are we still considering? I know we've moved into a shared use path, but having some kind of connectivity. Across the street, some kind of marked and safe crossing and then working obviously with the county to ensure that the timing. Fits with it, but it would seem to me to it would be beneficial to have. If we're building out this this bicycle network that we connected to our, you know, our trophy path across the street. So we can continue building out that network.
There has been a valuation of, you know, extending the ten foot down to Quinsercham Road. There is some obstacles to to do that, unfortunately, we we would have loved to had a, you know, wider right away. And we would have loved to have a lot of different things that we we don't really have at this point. And with the impact down towards Quinsercham Road, there there is the existing signal, as you mentioned. And impacts for that would be significant and additional cost for this project. And there would be environmental impacts that currently there are. Several trees that's in that region that we would have loved to try to use. But we 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 will be working with Montgomery Counties and State Highway to see if there's anything we can do further at the signal. To to improve that, but generally it it does neck down from your our stand, you know, our standard at ten foot. That diamond a little past the down at first field. Hey, say it, it starts at first field and we end at first field, so that the portion that's to the southern portion of the project near.
I I appreciate that and I would just ask staff on the longer term to keep their eye out on on how we can improve this. I know we talked about connectivity through Rabbit Road eventually up across Watkins Mill interchange. But a bike path or pedestrian path or mixed use path is only as good as what it connects to. And so I under what you stand what you're saying, it's a five foot or six foot. Sidewalk and then as you get beyond the 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 church and the daycare center, it comes down to on the right side. You have the the median guards or the roadside guard, so there's really not a lot of wiggle room as to. You know, if you've got a bicyclist or a pedestrian walking there and then when you get up to the corner. You know, that's where I'm most concerned as far as being able to connect to something that bikers are going to be able to utilize. Because again, the bike path is only as good as as what it connects to. So just just asking for for, you know, keep keep your eyes on the horizon for opportunities to improve there. Question on the bio retention ponds. Are we planning for wildlife ingress egress? I know we had some issues with. Certain other constructions within the city where we're having wildlife trapped in them. And so I was wondering if if that's part of our design.
So currently they are not anticipated to be fenced if if that makes sense. And in the past, we've had community members request it to be fenced. Which you see out there today, unfortunately, that was those designs were very early. And 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 the design, typically those practices aren't fenced. We may be adding fences to protect our, you know, our landscape from deer. And and those sorts of things and and a temporary measure. But there there should be egress for for. Our 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 nature to be able to 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 egress through those facilities.
Okay, so if you've had wildlife that goes in, they're able to get out. Okay. And then finally, I just wanted to say thank you. I know we had quite an extensive discussion regarding saving the tree canopy. I I appreciate that that utilized the bump out. You know, thing that I talked about last time, at least save three of the trees. One of the trees right across from Brown Station Elementary School was absolutely gorgeous. I think it's an oak. And the added benefit there is, as you mentioned before, I think it was Mark is is that these roads are quite wide. And that's a crossing from the neighborhood into the school, so you're not only saving a tree, but you're also saving. Creating a less risky crossing for students. I really do appreciate that. Yep, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Anyone else with questions before we go to the public? Not Jim McGilte, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and nice to meet you, Seth, and thank you, Mark, for your presentation as well. Being new to the council and not being a part of the previous conversations. These conversations probably happened before, but can you just for the benefit of the public who probably will also be. Finding this later in the process, can you just talk about the process of replacing the the trees? With the more appropriately sized trees for along the streets? I know particularly the stream nearby, there was vocal objection to the amount of trees that have come out recently. So it would be good to just again put that plan out there so that the public is aware of. Obviously, we're saving the mature trees there, but the kinds of trees and you mentioned that the number coming out is greatly. Less than the number of trees that you'll be putting in.
Yeah, so. We. We, of course, when our our team is evaluating the space that. We have and the the landscape strip is very narrow as as we are, as we have it. And the right away behind the sidewalk doesn't really allow us to do much to to increase. Space to to ultimately give us larger trees, unfortunately, and we don't want to get into the situation that we're currently in. So so the the goal that we've. Or the task we've given our consultant is, of course, to pick the right tree in the right space. The species need needs to be proper and make sure that it can grow where it needs to grow. And hopefully not impact what we're seeing out there today. And ultimately reduce long-term maintenance for us. There is areas that we are planting additional trees where we actually have the green space to do so. And we have reached out to some of our neighboring communities to see if we can add additional canopy. Next to our our project as well. So we've we've gotten pros and we've gotten cons from from some of our adjacent properties. Some has been has really been supportive of the project. For for adding new trees on their particular properties, which we really appreciate. And really gets to finding the the right trees for for the community as well. Trying to make sure it's a cohesive landscape design, so I'll also turn it over to Seth to see if he has anything to add to that. Seth, unmute it.
I think the key. Thing that you were mentioning was finding the right tree to fit the space. So as Mark was saying, we do have a very narrow planting strip on the east side of Quinsercham Boulevard. So. Replacing the trees with the with the type of treats that are there right now, we're just going to have the same issue in thirty years. And we're going to be forced to remove them. So we have done quite a bit of effort to 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 find the trees that will. Last their lifetime in this in that area. But as also, we also mentioned finding different locations to plant replacements. And we have a great opportunity to do that on Diamond Park. And as well in some private property around the area to maintain that tree canopy. So that was a a. An effort that we undertook to find those the right trees for this area.
So the trees that you're looking to put in there, do you have a, obviously I've identified the exact trees, but do you have an idea of the? The height of the canopy that we're expecting along the road after the project's done? When it comes into maturity?
It comes to maturity, yeah, I mean, the the canopy size will be. You know, in the in the range of maybe half as high as the oaks that are out there. But will we're spreading it out across a wider area, too. So the the trunk size will be will be appropriate for the narrow width. And the roots will be more vertical. Instead of spreading out wide, but we're adding more tree canopy in to spread that out.
Great, thank you.
Lisa, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mark and Seth, for your your presentation. And I I just want to also provide my thanks for the attention that you pay to to the canopy of the trees. When I was outside looking in, you know, understanding the discussions from the from the community, from the public about the trees. And the battle of, you know, what came first, the tree or the concrete? So even at the trees where where visibly they were coming through the concrete. It's it you still took the time to to take a look to see what made the most sense. And it and the fact that we're going to come out net positive and the number of trees is a is a good thing. So I just want to share my thanks for for the work that's been done and this project and look forward to. To what the landscape is going to look like going forward, because I think it's going to be pretty beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lisa. If I don't, I see, okay, we're going to go to Neil and then we're going to go to Rob.
All right, I just really don't have a lot of questions, but I thought I should at least weigh in a little bit. I've seen the other thirty two presentations on this project over the last seven years or so. And, you know, I appreciate all the hard work that's gone into this as it has evolved. Making sure that it wasn't going to impede traffic, or I know we had the bus stop issue in the beginning. You know, the the steps have really worked well to maximize the utility. To make sure that we increase the bicycle pedestrian access. And that we did, you know, we fixed the fixed the road and also did our best to save what trees could be saved. And also make sure that we add more trees elsewhere in order to make this work. So I know it's been a long, long, hard road. No pun intended, but I'll take it. But anyway, you know, thanks for all the good work and we look forward to getting to hundred percent and actually going forward with construction. And improving the the road condition, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll go back to Rob Wu.
Thanks, Mayor. The conversation between Jim and Seth jogged something in my memory. Just a humble ask if I could, and this harkens from a conversation we were having with the community. Recently with staff is if possible, can we use native plantings for the trees? And specifically, none of the Bradford pears, which are now invasives, which have been planted previously. Mark is either shaping, he said, no, that we're not going to do it, or no, we're.
No, we are definitely not doing Bradford pears.
All all native planting would be A okay in my book.
Yeah, we 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 have requested to have our landscape staff do as much as we can with natives. I can't guarantee that'll be the final, but again, it's when we're dealing with a very narrow strip. They they they, we've asked them to go through multiple iterations of of landscapes. So we we will reiterate that to them to make sure it's, if possible, maybe.
Okay, we will, I'm going to open it up if anybody. From the public would like to speak, and I see one hand up already. Tech team, if you could bring up Mike Sesma, that would be great, our former city council colleague. Mike, just unmute yourself, state your name, don't forget to state your name and address or neighborhood and then go ahead.
Good evening, council, it's Mike Sesma, West Writing and former council member. I I want to echo the comments that it's been a long, long road to get get to this point. I just have a few things to raise, a couple of good things, but a couple of other issues. Very excited to hear about the L E D lighting. It's very much needed improvement along Quinsercham Boulevard. And hope that happens along First Field as well eventually. I got to say that I'm skeptical about the tree saving efforts. It's very costly and likely to fail. I think we need, I think the council and the city need to be realistic and honest. And inform the public that this tree canopy, the new tree canopy is going to be nothing like the tree canopy that exists there. It's a, it's taken fifty years to get to that point and clearly the wrong trees were planted fifty years ago or more. The new tree canopy is not going to be the same street tree canopy that exists now. So it's a, you have to be honest with the public about it. And like I said, even these three trees that are going to be saved. You know, I'm I'm quite familiar with the trees along the path and the trees that have been selected to be saved. I'm not convinced that they're going to survive this anyway. So one of the other questions I had was about a crosswalk change at the north intersection of Quinsercham Boulevard and First Field. I know both I and and Rob Wu had recommended that that crosswalk was in the wrong place. I didn't hear anything about that change in the plan from Seth and Mark, which I appreciate very much the presentation from both of you guys. And finally, I really want to know a little bit more about the stormwater facilities that are planned for Diamond Farm Park. I I I don't understand the you the slide describes the green street to substandard. I don't know what standard is, so it would be helpful to have a little bit more information. And then the bio retention, if this is going to be similar to the to the beds that exist that you showed the illustration in packet page eleven. Is is that basically going to be what you're going to use along those five areas? In building those stormwater facilities? Or is is it going to be dry ponds or some other combination of those things? It would be good to have some of those details, but I am glad to see the effort taken there. And to know that none of these bio retention areas will be fenced, I think that's very important. I think that in some ways fences attract young, young children and they want to climb them and get on the other side of them. So I think that's a a concern. But anyway, those are my comments. It's nice to see this us on the road forward in progress. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mike, and I don't see anybody else in the public here. So Mark, I will leave it to you and Seth to respond to anything you'd like to respond to for Mike.
Sure. The the, thank you for our to our previous council member Sesma. The some of the crosswalks at First Field and Quinsercham Boulevard. We did add one additional leg at that intersection to bring the crossing there. So there will actually be a. Two crossings on First Field. One particular connection on First Field is a driveway entrance on that side. So that isn't really a crosswalk, but there is going to be a portion that goes across Quinsercham Boulevard, which will be. Is a will be straight as as what's currently there as a crosswalk, so it'll be as. Implemented for crosswalk for that particular intersection as much as we can provide. As far as the bio retentions would reiterate that we do not plan to have those fenced at all. And we we plan on keeping that open to the current current requirements. Agreed, it's it's something that's just maintenance and it's everything related to that. So we will not be incorporating fencing around there. They they do will temporarily pond water, but they will underdrain over time. So you will see ponding temporarily in those rain events. But the landscaping that will be provided in those will survive in that media that that's ultimately installed. As far as the tree canopy, yes, the tree canopy will not be as it as large. Initially. As what we have right now and then ultimately the the long term, the the planting material will be smaller in nature. In the long-term growth, it will. The the goal is still to provide again the right tree and the right space and make sure that we can. Provide. You know, trees that that will be suitable and we don't run into the same situation that we are currently in. As to the trees that we're trying to save, we we believe that it's really. We we think that it's a benefit to try to save those at a minimum, so we're we're trying to implement that. We believe we will have a high success. High success rate to try to save those particular trees by providing them additional green space. With anything, there could be tree impacts at the long term, there is the possibility that they won't live. As long as we were hoping, so there is always that drawback. But we will ask our consultants to put in the specifications as much as possible to save those trees that we're trying to save. For for those bump outs, which will add to the. Safety, which reduces the the crossing across Quint Orchard Boulevard, so it's a double improvement in my opinion. We get to try to. Save the trees, we get to increase pedestrian safety. So it really gives us the strong possibility of doing what what we can for those particular trees. I think I got everything I.
Well, there, Mark, there was one more question about the effectiveness of the green streets.
The the existing green streets, at the time, they were very early on in the. Stormwater treatment management. And they, the 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 standards that we have today are not what was back then and the treatment. Media that we use is different. When I say media, it's the 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 soils that we actually use in the bio retentions. It's it's laid out a little bit different. We actually, we underdrain it. With from that media. So it's it's. Been refined over the many years from when we implemented the original green streets. And as you can tell, the 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 landscaping is a little bit different, kind of more growth in there. So we're hoping to bring that as additional. Cohesiveness in the corridor, use the bio retentions for landscaping advantage. You know, to to bring that with the. And and link those along the corridor to provide additional community cohesiveness and corridor enhancements. So that's kind of the the background of some of that the green streets. Hopefully that answers. That the question.
If not, Mike knows how to get a hold of us. So with that, unless I see any other hands go up, then we appreciate very much the update and. Hoping that that the momentum that we've gathered here continues because. While, you know, as Seth mentioned, it's hard to. Cost estimate construction these days, the one thing we do know is that it tends to go up. It does not tend to go down. The longer we wait, so let's hope that this project continues to move forward at at we at the very least at the schedule you guys have. Mapped out and we'll 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 look forward to more updates. And we thank you all and that is all we have on the agenda tonight. I will just mention, remind everybody that. On Saturday, we have Summer Fest from six PM to eleven thirty PM. Which features music and food and fireworks and an afterglow party and it's going to be a great time. We hope you'll join us. It's over at. Bora Park and if you have any questions, you could find information on the city website. The next. Regular meeting due to the July Fourth holiday will be on Tuesday, July fifth, seven thirty PM. Hopefully in person hybrid as we usually do and until next time, let's do great things, Gaithersburg. We are adjourned.